And to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much, everyone, for coming this evening to our Monday night meeting and continuation of our public hearing. And we do have one maintenance item that we need to cover. So we'll probably take, we'll get that out of the way first. Okay, so Resolution 187 is to authorize the approval to transfer village green area property located behind 184 East Main Street, Section 115 Block 4, Lot 12, to the current owner of George Wans. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Five zero, or, I'm sorry, four zero. So for the continuation, I know there's a couple of new faces in the crowd. This is our third public hearing continuation. We entertain questions and comments, but before we do so, we've modified a couple of screens and updated some things from the from the budgetary side of the House. So I thought it would be a good idea, be a good idea to, you know, let Leslie go through this, give you guys the update. And again, we'll open up the floor, excuse me, we'll open up the floor for questions and comments.
Is that dark enough for everybody? If you want us to turn more lights on, turn more lights.
Did everybody get the hand jobs?
Okay, so from our prior public hearing on the 24th.
Okay, so there was just a slight modification from the previous public hearing. It was decided to reduce the mayor, deputy mayor, and trustee salaries back to the original. So with making that change, the tax increase will be 21.14% for property taxes, 19% for the water rates, and 17% for the sewer. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things regarding the deficit financing that was issued. This is, this was issued to offset any prior deficits. This cannot, this money cannot be used to balance future budgets. So we're not allowed to use that money to off, to balance this, the 24-25 budget to reduce taxes even more. And if it's determined after all the audits are completed, that the village does not have an accumulated deficit of 4.4 million, we have to pay that money back to New York State. So we really have to monitor what the money's being spent on, which is what we're currently doing. And as mentioned in the public hearing on the 24th, for this budget we're in, the 23-24 budget, we are projected to have a shortfall of approximately $690,000 due to overestimating the non-property tax revenue. So revenues were budgeted conservatively as they are in the 24-25 budget. The tax increase for the budget we're in, 24-25, 23-24, should have been 18%. As I mentioned, the original budget that was submitted to the mayor and the board back in November from all the department heads had a 36.62% increase. So with all the meetings, the mayor, the board worked very hard to go through each wine item for each department to reduce those costs. So by doing this, they were able to reduce the tax rate to the 21.14% increase. And again, this increase is reflective of minimal to no tax increases over the past six years. If there was an average of a 3% to 5% increase over the past six years, the 24-25 tax increase would be equivalent to that between a 3% and 5% increase. And this slide just reflects the minor change by reducing salaries. And it just puts into perspective what the 21.14% increase will be based on your assessed value. So somebody who has their assessment at $25,000 for tax purposes only, your annual increase will be $267 a year. And they can just go down the line based on your assessments. We just did it in 5,000 increments. So it can range from $267 to $640 if it's assessed at $60,000. And again, this is just the water. Based on that minor change with the salaries, 28,000 could be an annual variance of $28 compared to a 56,000, which is a $56. And then sewer, oops, sorry. Sewer, the same thing. It can range from $36 to $72. And as I mentioned before, this budget is reflective of the salaries being adjusted down. So $15,000 for the mayor, $12,000 for the deputy mayor, and then $2,000 for each trustee.
Any questions on that portion? Thank you, Leslie, for updating that and getting that ready for tonight's meeting. So the floor can be opened. What I'd like to do is, if you would like to have a comment, come up to the podium, give your name, your address, and your question, and we can just use that format. That would help us keep track of the questions and possibly responding back to anybody. So whoever would like to go first, first row, potentially, second row.
No bells? I'm not going to get up. I'm going to speak from here. Sean Egery, 4, Bellavon Drive. I know there's nothing you can do about this budget. It's going to go through. We need the money. My question is, there's money that was put out by the village on bands, not bands upons, but as for the sweeper, and we're supposed to get $235,000 back for Vern Allen Park on some money back. We spent money down there. And these were all supposed to be returned once they filled out the paperwork, which was never done. So my belief should be that whatever money comes back should be put back to pay in that $4.5 million bond that we're flowing to cover some of that as principal payments only. It was taken out of the budgets and it lowered the budget in the amount of money available to the previous boards for three years. It kept on getting lower and lower depending on how much they took out each year. So that may have created quite a bit of the deficit. And we took the 4.5 to pay off the deficit. I think we need to put that money directly in there instead of buying a truck. Well, we used the CHIPS money to buy a truck. It's been done before. Use something else and give up a road if we need a truck that desperately.
Right. Well, what I found out through Bond Council and our bonding agency is that, like a home mortgage where you could pay off your principal, can't do that with a bond.
Well, it should be put towards payments anyhow.
Whatever we could put towards it, Sean, and if there's a way to twist it and make it work, we'll do that. But we also feel it's a good way that we are getting reimbursed, right? For example, I mentioned at the last meeting that the $250,000 for the sweeper, we're basically just waiting for the wire transfer. And I believe it's coming in February.
So it was paid out of funds that was expecting this money back. You've got the 4.5 to cover the deficit. That probably created a good part of the deficit proportionally.
Most of it wasn't, well, I can't say it wasn't on the expense side, but a lot of it, as Leslie was indicating, a lot of it was on the revenue side. Overinflated numbers that were just not there. And again, when you play with that number and you play with the expenses, you're making the budget work. And trying to bring it to some level where you're going to sit there and say, we're not going to raise taxes. If someone ever said that to me, and I've heard it a thousand times, I charge. Because you cannot not raise. And if you use the word taxes, taxes. But like we talked about the other night, everything goes up across the board. And so at the end of the day, we were over 20% in the hole. And we can operate the deficit, so we're making the corrective actions to get back on our feet, manage what we're doing. If money comes back and we can't use it towards principal or interest on the bond, then if we need a truck, then that money, rather than going out and borrowing another 250, we've got the 250. So it's a, you know, you could play, play with that number all day long. But we haven't found a way through the legal system to make it work. The way you're describing, and I think what everybody else, we were kicking around the table on Saturday, was to basically try to pay off the loan faster. But with bonds, you can't do that.
So make an interesting principle. That's what has to be done instead of spending it. You can't keep on spending. That's what the problem's been. Like, we're spending money we basically don't have. So if this is money you could put in the bank, you give it 5% interest and throw that against the bonds loan and all stuff.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, we, I don't know what our interest, and we brought that up on Saturday, but what we have in our bank account where we have basically 2 million left, and we're getting 5.5%, we were, I would estimate, because the last time we spoke, we had about 50,000, I think, in interest. So I'm thinking between 60 and 70,000, you know, that we've made an interest in that account. So, you know, that's, that's our thought and our plan. And if any money comes back, it's to create a special account for reserve. So potentially that 250 comes back, we put it in a reserve if it's not needed in the expense side of the house. Because that's what was going on with the FEMA money, the COVID money. Everything was dumped right back into the A fund and disappeared through just paying on our bills. When you get $600,000 for no reason at all, no questions, no applications, and it just shows up in your bank, you got to think of something you want to do with that money versus blowing it on bills. That's my opinion.
I see what I'm saying.
But, yeah, no, I agree. I mean, we're, and that's what we're trying to do. So, you know, the, you mentioned the $135,000 at Vern Allen Park. That grant never got out of the building.
Right. That was said, that they didn't get it. They spent some money, but they never got it reimbursed.
There's a grant for $125,000 for the memorial park for the expansion of the playground area. We have submitted that grant just within the last week. We already got some feedback. They want to see something else, and we're working on that.
Did we loan the all-inclusive park money? I know what you were asking.
That's all grant. I mean, that, it's, it's grant and money that was donated by the Lions Club.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, Wayne. Could you just name an address, please?
I got my head wrapped around this, right.
Wayne, would you just state your name and address, please?
Linker, Patrick, 182 East Main Street. Did I just hear that we took money, we potentially took money from Water and Sewer like we were talking about Saturday? And we put that to pay demo fund bills, and we can't reimburse Water and Sewer?
What you heard is that
How are we explaining?
That's what we're explaining with the deficit funding. In a normal budget, when you know you're going to, your A fund is going to somehow recoup that money that you took out of Water or Sewer to move to the A fund to pay a bill. In normal circumstances, within a year, that money that's coming into the A fund, revenue-wise, needs to pay back either Water or Sewer.
So then if you did a due to or due from on your A fund back to Water and Sewer from your tax money, now that adds to your deficit, and it can be done. Because you're fault, you're not properly representing the deficit in your audit.
Well, deficits across
If you borrowed it from Water and Sewer and you sent it to the A fund to pay bills, Water and Sewer still owed that money by law.
Correct.
Correct.
So now if you take the money from the A fund and send it back, the money you have in the bank is to fulfill the deficit. So the deficit's in the A fund, but it can't be done.
The deficits are across all funds.
But the deficit in that fund is caused because of improper loan. You have to make the fund whole.
Not just that. It's also caused by undercharging. The revenue from Water and Sewer are not bringing in enough to pay the basic bills for those departments.
But it's my understanding that through some of these meetings and meetings previous to this, that potentially some of that money for the sweeper came from there. And that money was used when we got Water and Sewer, like conversations with the mayor outside of here, that money from Water and Sewer were used to pay regular bills. That money has to be replenished. I have no objection to the tax retreats. I get that. Like I said Saturday, we're getting killed on both ends. Make Water and Sewer whole.
That's what we cannot do. That's what Leslie was describing.
You can pay Water and Sewer back from your A fund and improperly state your deficit.
That will be done eventually, once we get through all of our audits.
Yeah.
We can't do that right now.
But we'll never get the Water and Sewer money back. You're never going to lower that. You put, say that, say the number's $200,000, and you move that money from your A fund back to Water and Sewer, you don't need to increase it that much. Maybe you need to increase it 3% or 5%.
That increase, though, is just for, to balance the current year budget.
Because it's $200,000 short.
No. It's based on the expenses for the past nine months and projections off of that.
Thank you. Vinnie Lang, 9th and Crook. What are our actuals for the Water and Sewer from last year's residents? So how do we?
How do you know?
Well, we're going off of, this budget is based on, again, meeting with department heads, what the costs are going to be, salaries, benefits, what they need to fix.
We don't know what our actual was from the revenue taken in from the Water and Sewer.
That's what we're trying to fix now. That's why we're switching financial software. It's all not correct in QuickBooks.
How do you do a budget and not have that? I, I, I don't know.
It was a very difficult process. And again, it was just meeting with department heads, what the costs are to date, what we, what salaries are, what benefits are. Again, with Chris Finnegan, what he needs to get the Water and Sewer up to where it should be. And then we know what money we have to bring in to balance that budget. That's what the tax increase, that's what the rates are.
I just can't see where you get a percentage like that. And you don't even have an actual number, what we brought in last year. That's hard for me to understand. I'm sorry.
We know what we brought in.
And the look on your face explains it all right.
Well, we know what the salaries are. We know what the benefits are. We know what bills we've paid. But to actually get what the budget was compared to actual, that data is not accurate in our capital software now.
Yeah, you know what, you know what went out.
We know the bills that go on out, but I can't give you a budget to actual right now. That's what we're switching software.
Do we know how many gallons that we, that went through every single meter in this village?
Vinnie, I can get you that information, yes. I can get it.
Shouldn't we have that for the budget process? So you could have the revenue.
It is. That's what
She just said she didn't know the actuals.
Based upon everything that we've seen, when you sit there and you say actual, you're talking about something that happened on the previous budget. We don't trust that information. We can't trust the revenue. We've already explained that, that the revenue was inflated, that the expenses were underestimated. So the reason we're $441,000 in 2020 in a deficit, and over potentially, according to the auditor on Saturday and Wednesday, it's over $500,000. And perpetually, '22 isn't going to get better. Because he didn't pay bills from December, potentially even November, when other bills back to May or June, until the new budget started. So he was broke. There wasn't anything there to do. Exen, example of the rose. He couldn't use CHIPS money because he didn't have the money to put out in front.
I know what you're saying right now, but my question is pertaining to Water and Sewer. The amount of gallon, the amount of gallons that went through these meters, you guys accepted payment. We don't pay cash here, so we have checks coming in. How much money, revenue-wise, did we generate from selling water to our residents? That's my question.
Okay, we can give you the number. That we can tell you because it's coming out of the, that's coming out of what they call a UV MAX system. That is our Water and Sewer billing system. We can tell you how much water.
Treasurer, is that the treasurer? Is that the proper term? The treasurer just said, we don't have that number. So how, how do you do a budget and not know that number before you did this?
We had the number that we used. We estimated the gallons, whatever it was, that we projected.
It's not an estimate. It's an actual number.
You don't want to give us this.
A number of gallons.
Water at its time, please.
The what?
Quarterly reports I gave you that have the dollars that were entered into.
Yes, we use the usage for the, you know, to date.
No, what he's talking about is
A rate increase.
He want, he's asking, how much did came into the system financially, which I provided to you?
How much did our residents pay?
And I can get you that information. She has had that to help base the budget off of.
Then I misspoke. Then I apologize.
So if you want to come by tomorrow, I'll be here in the morning.
And I'll do the same as the sewer, correct?
It's too late tomorrow.
It's not too late.
Yes, it is. We're going to vote tonight.
The number is the number.
The number's not going to change.
It's not going to change anything. It's not changing anything. And a matter of fact, the, the bigger problem with the Water and Sewer billing system is that they never fixed or corrected anything in the system. They just sat there and said, Vinnie, oh, my bill's too high. Okay, come in, we'll lower it. Lower it.
That's been going on for years. Not the previous, that's been going on for 20 years.
I'm just telling you what happened over the last umpteen years. And, and it just compounded the problem. Every, I mean, the, between replacing meters and trying to straighten out estimated billing. Here, they would do an estimated billing, estimated billing, estimated billing. What was the estimated percentage of total bill? What was it? Less than?
It was 75%.
75%. It was nothing. And then all of a sudden, you get a bill, and now everybody's screaming and crying because now you've got an actual based upon all the estimations, and that's 25%, 25%, 25%. And then you got your real bill, and you got whacked, rather than fixing the problem. And Susan has been diligently since April, taking care of software problems, hardware problems, water meters, like we explained to you, I think on Wednesday.
So the water meters you mentioned, you guys are looking to upgrade and change to a wireless system?
Right.
Is this part of this increase, part of that?
No.
The pace of that?
No. No. And then listen, and we talked about capital projects. All that stuff will be laid out so that, we were also told, you're right, that New York State's going to be watching us under a microscope for the next 10 years because of all the stuff that we had to do. So you'll know, like we'll know, and they'll know, what, what the plans are. If we can't do it, like I said to you on Saturday and last Wednesday, ultra-conservative spending this year to keep it down so we can, we can get through this year and feel comfortable with some of the estimated things. Because if you can't find the bills and you can't find the checks, it's like your household. It, it's a mess. So this year with the computer system, we'll start to understand what we're, where we really stand at the end of the day. And it's been that way again for six years. So, you know, it's very difficult to make heads of tails. And you're mad, and we're all mad. Trust me, we had this conversation too. If you think it's any easier being here after being in the audience for three years, quit asking these questions and being told everything was rosy, but we knew it wasn't. Call New York State for an, for an audit to be a drop in, in a, whatever you want to call those people that call up. But we, we recognize that there was an issue. Yes.
I just like to bring to the point, when I had a water meter problem, I had to bring a picture in of the meter with the numbers on it. I was not just fluffed and said, okay, we're going to lower it. I had to show them the meter. There's a number on my meter and the numbers on the dials. So you could just reduce the money or increase whatever it was, it looked like the actual numbers.
Good. That's what they, that's what they're doing.
That's what they were doing. I had to, twice I had to do it.
Yeah. H2O was very good at it, and now, again, all that responsibility and extra money that we would pay in for H2O is now being done in-house by our guys. Question?
Tom Gilde, 12th Waterford Circle. I think it was the auditor the other night who mentioned that as, as things get cleaned up, you can pay off that, that 7.5% loan quicker and refinance it into, because you'll have, I guess, the correct audit reports and stuff, we'll be able to get a lower.
No, the way it's been working, the way we see it to work, is that you, you start out, when you borrow that money, you start out with a BAN. And BAN can be renewed over several years before it needs to be converted to a permanent bond. What he was talking about, I think, was the, the BAN that we got, again, was at an interest rate of 7.4%, right? Because the market changed and everything else, and we couldn't submit any financial records, as I said, right? So this company that stepped up and took us was like a song and a prayer. So what happens next year is that we would potentially take that BAN, and flip it to a bond. And at that point, what we're hoping is that the interest rates are going to drop. Then we can take advantage. If we can get a 3%, 4% or whatever the market is bearing at that time. And we showed good faith in our payment and, you know, our interest payment is going to get paid, and our next year payment will roll into. And I think with that bond too, which will help us, is that we might not have to pay that first bond payment until the following year in '26. But that will, you know, we'll dig into that and find out. So potentially, we could be putting some money aside, as Sean says, from next year. Put that money aside, and then when '26 come, we'll almost be ahead of ourselves. So potentially, in our ninth year, the bond interest rate will drop. Your payment will come down a little bit towards the tail end of the 10 years. And then we might not even need to make a, a 10-year payment because we might have that money already in the bank from year one that we're not going to use if you follow that.
Okay, you, I think you answered my ultimate question there, that as things continue to move along, there could all, there's already some relief looking in a year. There's something looking better.
Well, the payment's going to, we're going to have an interest payment.
I mean, the interest rate might be lower when all, once all the audits are up to date and we have a credit rating. When we go out to bond, we'll probably get a better interest rate than the seven and a quarter we are currently.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Either, just name and address, please.
Dona, Murphy, to Hopkins Court. So, I mean, I, I miss Saturday. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So this may have already been asked.
Can you, I can hear you. I'm sorry.
You can't hear me? Oh, my gosh, you have such a loud mouth. I usually So you're in the process of discovery, it sounds like. That's what I'm getting here, like what we owe still. We still may owe more, right? Or we may find something that we didn't get money back from. So you're still discovering all this. Don't you think that maybe, and I know that you went from 36% tax hike to 20% overall? I mean, since we're still in the
We have three guys, we've got a manager. And they maintain the operational portion of both areas. Now, that doesn't include if there's a problem, right, something breaks. We, we need to get it fixed. That comes out of our budget. It's not coming out of their budget. So what we're paying for is expertise licensing, and these guys are very good.
And you think it's worth it? I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking.
I get worried of, no, well.
Are we covered by their license from D E C as well?
I'm sorry?
It's under their license. I think, are we covered by their license as well from the D E C if there's any kind of issues with that?
Yeah, they're responsible.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's why we have it.
Yeah.
Because if we didn't have the right license, then we wouldn't even have the permits to even operate the plants. They shut you down, or bring, I don't know what would happen, to be honest with you. But that's why it's required and it's needed. But just prior to us getting into office, and it was in March.
March twenty second.
We were checking March twenty second. Because we, we had initial meetings when we got in with every department head, and we asked them, you know, tell us what's going on. And they gave us a, you know, a laundry list and a boatload. The one thing that we had found out when we started looking at the contract for H two O, realizing it's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That the previous mayor signed the contract on, on March twenty second for five years. Rather than saying, you got a contract coming due, guys, you might want to check this out. No, signs it, done, five years. So I think, you know, I think it's twenty-six. We have to wait. The guys, again, the guys do a good job, and there are not a lot of firms out there. But we were doing a heck of a lot. I don't know, I can't say a better job. We were doing the job for our employees. And, and I think they did a great job as well, so, you know, it's, it's a balance when you get, when you get done with it, you know? How many guys does it take?
I guess Paul Line, Ten Patriot Lane, I wholeheartedly disagree with your last statement. Everything up today was good. We didn't do a better job in-house.
I'm sorry?
We didn't do a better job with in-house employees.
Well.
That place was a mess. It was a mess. From the headworks.
Now, you're talking twenty sixteen, seventeen?
From the headworks on, it was a mess.
Well, back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, Pat Rowley was there. He, he's one of the best operators in a sewer plant I've ever seen. Yeah, why not?
Can I continue?
Sure.
Mind if I go? We're going in order, right?
Yeah.
So, I do want to acknowledge.
Sorry, name and address, please.
Oh. No secrets, all right. Stephen Cox, Seven Alexander Drive. Been a nineteen-year resident. In Washingtonville, prior to that, other than Scottstown and Circleville. And I said to you on Saturday that if I say something that's uneducated or sounds stupid, forgive me, I want to crawl back under the rock that I live in and live in my bubble. Take care of my family and my kids, and, you know, then you get wind of something like this where all of a sudden, you know, every, every, every time you turn around, people want more money from you. But I do have a couple of things that I'd like to say, and I mentioned on Saturday, if I was involved in what went down to previous administration, I might consider taking zero-dollar salary as a show of good faith until all of this got sorted out. I acknowledge that you guys are, I guess, reducing or foregoing a raise maybe that you were rightly owed this year, so that I appreciate. A zero-dollar salary is kind of extreme, and not many of us can afford to do that. But if there was any involvement with what happened in the past, it might be a very important step to gain the trust of the citizens back. You took that step in the right direction by not taking raises, so thank you for that. I do want to say, again, who's keeping an eye on Mr. Buco, our former mayor? And do we know where he is at all times? Because it seems like something criminal happened.
We know where he lives.
Yeah, before he takes the six or seven million dollars and disappears. Keep an eye on him. You bring up that we were spending fifty-six hundred dollars a month on a generator at the sewer treatment.
Yep.
Who authorized those payments? And who did we rent that generator from? It really does seem like there's an opportunity to sort of skim the town, and it sounds like there's some malfeasance potentially there. I don't want to accuse anybody of anything, but that's our money, you know? And if I ran the sewer treatment plant and I rented a generator for my friend, that's troubling, so I don't know if that's all clean or not, but it does seem like it's worthy of an investigation. On Saturday, a couple of times, some of the residents from the town had floated the idea, well, we should just merge with Blooming Grove. And I don't know who was here and heard that. It didn't dawn on me at the time, but that would be suicide for our village. It would be over. I don't know if everybody knows what happened in Blooming Grove, but some very peculiar things went down there. And I don't know if our Senator Scouthis ever got to the bottom of why. George Pilage, is his name, I believe?
Yes.
Why was his buy level worth four point six million dollars?
That's South Blooming Grove. There's a big difference.
Two municipalities.
Two different municipalities.
I don't think we should merge with anybody. I think we should fix our problems.
South Blooming Grove is a village just like we are.
Yeah. I, I, you know, until all hope is lost and the lights go out, I don't think we should entertain anything like that. We lose the control of our town and the way we want to keep it. And we can disagree amongst ourselves what our vision for this town might be. I like it small. I grew up in Circleville. There was one gas station. There's still one gas station.
I think there's two now.
In Circleville?
Yeah. You got the one on the other side?
You know what, there was always, there was always lakes, which was the carry.
There's one on the other side of Seventeen now now.
And then there was one a little further off. But I don't think it's changed very much, although Gary Lake did turn his little corner store into a bigger, a little strip mall, if you will. Hi, sorry, Sean, is that what your name is? We were talking about paying down our debt a little bit sooner, so that we maybe save some money. I don't know if this is even legal or possible, but could we invest that money that is proposing we use to pay our debts down into a town fund that maybe is invested in a stock fund, they're like spider funds, something that never loses? I don't know, just think it outside the box. I don't even know if it's legally but if it's not, and that money's there, why not do what President George Bush did years ago and sent everybody a check? Pay our water payment for the month. It's not a good thing. So instead of that money just sitting in a pot that does nothing, pay all our water bills for the month if there's excess money there. I need to know more about where that money might come from and be considered excess. I'm trying to learn as much as I can as quickly as I possibly can. I heard some people say that they called, their calls into the water department because they had a complaint about their bill. I don't understand my water bill swings wildly from month to month. I called over and wondered why this was happening. Nobody ever offered me a discount. That's kind of troubling. Is this something that you have to be friends with somebody for?
No, all you need to do is call, call down here, and we'll make an appointment, and we'll validate and certify that meter. And find out if it's broken, whereas something is really whacked out with it. If it is, it gets replaced.
Okay. Yeah, I just thought.
And then if there's a problem on the software side, that will be, you know, corrected by Susan. So we're trying to, you know, every, every pin that pops up, we're, we're trying just to address it, close the ticket, so that every bill thereafter is going to be, going to be accurate.
Yeah, it was just very personal level. It's odd that my water bill was a hundred and thirty dollars every three months forever, and now all of a sudden I'm getting three hundred and fifty-dollar water bills.
Well, you did not seven hundred.
I told my kids to stop showering this morning. I literally did. I'm not trying to be a comedian or anything.
That wasn't in August when you filled the pool or had to.
Well, so that's the wild thing. I borrowed a power washer from a friend, and I expected I'd get walnuts, and I didn't. So something's wrong, maybe on a personal level with the water bill.
So the problem is, water meters are good for about fifteen, twenty years, okay? After fifteen, twenty years, they either slow down, especially the dial readers, they'll just stop.
Wouldn't that work in my favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Nothing's worked in my favor.
Or sometimes we get what we call a runaway meter. It just is going crazy. It, you can have those varied readings. We have people who have had siding done and have taken the outside readers off and never had them put back on. So now they're getting estimated bills, and there were never work orders put in to have that checked. We have a couple of residents who have turned their meters around.
So, I apologize. I don't want to go on a tangent. A lot of the things I'm bringing up are very tangential in the first place, but I appreciate the suggestions, and when you sent out a mailer to everybody again, maybe that's one that a little rider at the end about suggestions about making sure your water bill is accurate. But this sounds like pro tips from somebody that I would love to hear on private conversation while we waste everybody's time. One thing that does bother me, and I asked you, Mary Davenko, you know, whose authority is it? And the number that is come up with, you said it's yours, and you can raise it a hundred percent and two hundred percent. And maybe I misheard. I don't always have the greatest memory, but sometimes it's spot on.
That's any municipality, not just the village of Washingtonville.
Which seems like there should be some sort of checks and balances on that, because you could just, you want to get rid of everybody in your town? You have the authority to do something.
We don't want to do that.
Here's your check right now.
Yeah.
This is what.
I think we all agree that there's nothing we can do here that would stop what's coming.
Well, and that's why we've been saying this since April when we got into office. You know, we, every meeting, there was some type of a financial update explaining step by step, month by month, what we were running into, what we were seeing. Trying to estimate what in the world was going on in the same token, trying to get the controllers office in here. Talking to the bonds people because we knew we were running out of money because of the one point six million that was written out of our budget. I mean, it was just enormous. So we wanted to be, and like we said we were going to be, as transparent as possible. So you know what's going on. And so by doing all of that, coming to this point in the process, wasn't going to be a bombshell. I would have, we would have been in the wrong, sitting here, and then on the twenty-fourth, say, oh, by the way, you know, we had a, you know, the year wasn't too bad, but we had to go borrow money, and now we got to raise your taxes twenty-some odd percent. And initially, it was thirty-some odd percent. So, you know, okay, no, you know, I, I mean, we've tried to, every step, every month, let you guys know what's, what was going on. Couple of letters, YouTube, whatever, whatever mechanisms like we talked about on Saturday and Wednesday.
Steve, can I just, the last statement that you said, there's nothing that we can do moving forward. I disagree. There's nothing that we can do about what happened. There is something we can do.
No, I, I.
For the future.
I think maybe I was misinterpreted or I misspoke, but, you know, what I was projecting there is the idea that if you decided in some sinister fashion, that you were going to do something with our village, you could easily price all of us out, and there's no checks and balance. Or maybe I'm wrong, you know, who steps in and stops you guys from just arbitrarily raising our property taxes some ridiculous amount? This is a high amount, but.
We're here to balance a budget, and that's what we need to do.
I understand, and I have some learning to do about how a village runs in comparison to everybody so obsessed with their own life and consumed by, you know, the D C politics, but we may all wildly disagree about D C politics, but our little town is where we should be able to come together. And understanding who has the authority to do these things, and understanding what we as citizens and villagers can do to fight back when we feel it's unjust is something we have to educate ourselves in, so you know, be patient with me. If I say something down, please just correct me.
No, we appreciate you being here. I mean, for us to be here with no input or no comments, and we knew this was going to be.
What makes more sense for me to be here?
You know, out of control meetings, because everybody's upset.
It makes more sense for me to come here and complain directly to you than to call a friend who lives in a different town and say.
And I said that all along. Number's, number's there.
And then, I don't know, just, you know. New York State is here. I don't know if you are with New York State, who the auditors are. So the funny thing about that is I have zero faith in them. I trust them less than I trust anybody. And I told you the other day, don't be offended because I don't trust my own mother. You know, then you see something like going on in New York State, nobody stops it when you have Letitia James suing former presidents over money that he borrowed from a bank that he paid back. So I have zero faith in them, and any involvement that they have in our town scares me.
Okay, thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
Michelle?
You're putting, um.
Name and address, please.
What?
Name and address for the.
Michelle, Thirteen High Grove Drive.
Thank you.
You don't want to give your last name?
Dylan.
Thank you.
Now that everybody knows me, okay. The bond line that you said you were going to put, it's not going to be with our taxes. It's going to be a separate line?
That's, that's the proposal, yes, that's what.
How long are we going to have that separate line?
Ten years.
Ten years.
Yes, until the loan is paid.
Does, does it just go away at the end of the tenure?
Yeah, and that's why, to somebody's comment earlier, I didn't, I'm trying not to co-mingle that now inside the normal tax rate, because it, to me, it's going to cloud things, and everybody will say, well, what's the percentage of that inside that big number?
Well, I think that would be the first time ever in history that taxes went down, right? Is that what we were saying?
It won't. It won't.
Right, so you have as much faith as you.
Yeah, but with that.
Well, the percentage might probably mountain.
I know we get a tax write-off, or I think it's over ten thousand dollars.
Your cap in New York State is ten thousand, so I got a right.
Right. I'm already above that in high growth, but for people that are at seven thousand, eight thousand, or just about there, that would be beneficial to them. You know, to combine it, so that they have the monies. I mean, they're paying it.
I'm not a CPA or a tax researcher.
I talked to an accountant today, and he recommended that whoever brings that question to you is really to have them touch base with their accounting people and let them sort that out at the end of the day. Whatever would be beneficial, but, you know, it's.
I think it's going to cut into that ten thousand dollar federal tax credit unless it's a donation.
Don't we have tax lines on there for fire, library?
Yes.
Why couldn't it be put under bond tax?
Well, that's, that's what I'm proposing, if they just.
As long as it's under tax, if there's a code exchange, we'll be able to write it off. But if it's not under tax, go later.
Ben?
Ben, why am I in twenty-five quarters? I'm looking at the revenues, and I'm looking at the, we'll go, we'll say estimated from last year's budget's revenue. The only big difference I see is the sales tax. You know, we have one point one six. Last year, they had estimated one point three. Pretty much every other line on this, on these revenues are pretty much the same.
They also had that appropriated fund balance. That's a number, that's a plug to balance the budget, so that's technically a revenue.
Okay.
So they had the sales tax. I think building permits were a little.
Like, we're not, we're talking.
Not, nothing substantial.
Nothing substantial, like, the way you're making it sound like extremely underestimated revenue.
Well, six hundred ninety thousand dollar variance is pretty substantial.
Well, the sales tax, yeah, but all the other numbers.
And the four hundred thousand dollars were appropriated.
Do we have the actual sales tax for last year?
We're up to like eight hundred eighty thousand to date.
To date?
To date, yeah. We have one more quarter coming in. So it's going to be close to what we budgeted for in twenty-four, twenty-five, that one point one six.
Okay. So like, I'm looking at the law enforcement budget. Basically, it was right on the money from.
Expenses weren't, weren't a big difference. It was the revenue piece.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Bo?
Oh, finally. Go ahead. I'm just going to take a little bit, Paul Line, Ten Patriot Lane. It's going to take a little bit. Water and sewer fees are a hidden tax. They always have been. It's taxed, but it's money that we get. We know how many, whether it's an estimated bill, whether it's, you know, and most people pay their bill. If they don't pay their bill, it gets rolled over with the tax. We get that money every year. So we, but for you to say that you don't know how much we got last year, you should be able to tell me how much in interest and penalties we got for this current fiscal year running. We've been collecting for three and a half quarters. How much have we deposited in water and sewer? How much revenue have we got already this fiscal year?
We can tell you that, what we've collected so far. We said that earlier. The problem is what was going in those accounts was leaving as fast as it came in.
Okay.
Because.
Now, for this year, because we're talking about the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. You got, and at the, at the budget presentation that we got from the treasurer last week, the water and sewer funds also experienced an increase in rates during minimal increases over the past six years. Mayor and board, this has been. So that's the only reason we got for an increase. That's the only reason we got for an increase in water and sewer. At the last presentation, and that's what we're here with, the budget presentation. In my opinion, I, I, you know, when I look at the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for water and sewer, it balances out. Back in two thousand, what was it, two thousand fourteen, I came down and I talked to Dave Heinz and Joe Galanti, sat in your office, the mayor's office, and we went over the budget. And we went over line by line, and I'll never forget the line, and, and it reminded me when I read it, I laughed. Because when I read this budget at twenty-four, twenty-five, that you're presenting. Joe Galanti says to me, Paul, it's a push. There's no problem with that. And it looked like there was no problem with the budget that you did, you're presenting us. It's a push. Revenue matched expenditures anticipated. So we can't, you know, I can't understand why. And now, you know, it went down, and that's the other half of my question, went down to nineteen and seventeen percent increases. We can't understand why there's an increase at all. You can, you can vote on this budget with an amendment to not have an increase in water and sewer. I don't notice you need it. I don't see where, I don't see in this budget where you need that increase in water and sewer. So you can vote on this budget when it comes up for a vote, with an amendment, just like with the salaries, to not have an increase in water and sewer. And getting back to the salaries, we decreased the salaries, so we were told this evening that the increase is only going to be twenty-one point one four percent now, nineteen in water and seventeen in sewer. What does the salaries reduction have to do with water and sewer?
They were allocated in three funds.
No, no, it doesn't make a difference. It, we're taxed on the A fund, not on the F and G. That's why we, that's why we moved those salaries into the F and G, because it doesn't affect the tax base. But yet, it went down.
There were expenses in the water sewer that were removed.
No, we were talking about the salaries. That's why it went down to nineteen and seventeen. We eliminated the salaries, so it went down to nineteen and seventeen. But our tax rate, our tax rate is not estimated on the F and G. It's on the A.
Right. And that went down a couple of points.
That went down to twenty-one to one whatever. But how does that lower the F and G? How does that lower the water and sewer?
Because as Leslie said, all the salaries were spread across three funds.
That's why we do that. That's why we do that. We just talked about that.
Well, of course, that's why we do it, because you don't want to, you don't want to impact and kill the A fund. So you spread salaries.
Right.
Benefits, and, and all we were showing was that the board's salary was being deducted. So the percentage of that particular, those three funds.
So it should have just affected the A fund, not the F and the G.
Well, not everything was in the A fund. That's why you, you're having a, a difference within the G fund and the F fund, the water and sewer funds. That, that money was spread across all three. That's what we showed in the presentation.
I understand that, I understand that, but our property tax rate is only based on the A fund.
Yeah, property tax.
Right, and that's why that percentage was lower.
It was lower.
And the other two funds, that wasn't tax-related, but that's showing you that that came, and that money, the rate came down.
We're missing, we're missing something with each other, but I don't, other, you, you can't, you haven't shown me any reason for raising those water and sewer. This, the presentation we got last week, and when I looked at this budget, in two thousand fourteen, we had a twenty-five percent increase in this village. And that's when I went down, came down and talked to Joe and Dave. And I'm seeing a budget now that's balanced for twenty-four, twenty-five, but yet we're going to raise the water and sewer and the property tax.
Well, the reason it's balancing is because of that increase. That's the reason it's balancing.
Doesn't reflect that. Doesn't reflect that.
Well, it reflects that it's balanced. Otherwise, we'd still be operating in a deficit because of no, nothing being changed in the water and sewer.
The water meter rents and the sewer meter rents in the proposed budget reflect the increases in rates. And those rates are increased to create a balanced budget within the F and the G funds.
Well, the Delaware Engineering did, did increase the rates in twenty-one, December of twenty-one. They restructured the water rates and sewer rates, and it also to reflect on the, the sewer jet, the wastewater treatment plant that was going to kick in in twenty-two. So there was an increase in there.
Not enough.
They didn't have accurate data.
And that was one of the complaints, to step backwards, but Delaware had a difficult time obtaining data to support the numbers. And, I mean, that's why, you know, when you look at the facilities charge that we've discussed, how, how did we land at thirty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents? When that wasn't going to be enough money to pay the bond for the sewer plant? So what they were doing was taking probably water, sewer, and A fund money to pay the balance of what was owed, and it was in the neighborhood of probably a hundred fifty thousand. So, yeah, we're the bad guys. We had to make it what it is and face reality, and we raised it to fifty-eight dollars a quarter.
For three quarters.
Now, that money.
A quarter, for a quarter.
For a quarter is going to be in that fund untouched. And that was the other thing, that, if there was money in that account, Paul, I probably would say, you know what, let's see what the real issue is here. Because we saw it right away when we had to make this October's payment.
But we get, yeah, but we get that revenue, and you might not have had that money because people don't pay their bills. But now, with the rollover, you get that money.
Well, now.
So are we going to have excess money now?
No, when we get that money, whatever, the fifty-eight dollars is enough to pay the four hundred and some odd thousand dollars for this bond that needs to be paid. It's interest and principal. It's two payments that need to be made. That's enough to cover the bills.
So you have a lump, like you have a line in sewer now for debt service?
Yeah, it's in the facilities charge, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But again, you, you put that fifty-eight dollars for one quarter, but you will still recoup that money, all that money, all that water and sewer, you get paid every penny of it. Estimated or actual, you get paid every penny, either through payment or in rollover.
Yeah, but that's got nothing to do with the facilities fee. That's a separate line item.
We're talking about the water and sewer fund, the money coming in.
That's just a fixed fee for debt. That is dedicated. Any, no money should leave that. If it is, you're breaking the law. And that account was two.
Thirty thousand and one, seventy thousand and one, another one, about twenty-six and another one. In December, a hundred thousand dollars was transferred out of the water account to the A fund. Last year's tax re-levee for the water and sewer never made it to the water and sewer. It was put into the A fund and spent. So.
Let me ask you a question. Hold on.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a question. So we made the paper today. And they, they say that there's a hundred thousand dollars in a contingency fund in the A fund, twenty thousand dollars in the water, but there's zero contingency in the sewer. Is that a problem?
What report was this?
Senator Ben Hudson.
I don't know where they got their data.
Well, let's look at the budget. I don't, I don't see a contingency.
That's not a problem to have a contingency.
No, no, you have one, but you don't have one in the sewer.
Oh, I don't think that's, it's not required to have a contingency.
Well, should you?
Are you going to get there? Just get right to it. Go for it.
No, that's it.
No, all right, so you're not going to get there. Who's the treasurer of, of the town?
Wait, okay, so let me.
There, there, you're going to go there.
So that's, so we're going back there, and, and to his question, who is the treasurer of the town, all right?
You mean the village or?
Yeah, the village.
Going back to my last question at the last meeting. Why is this budget believable when the last budget wasn't, when we have the same treasurer? When I asked that question last Wednesday, excuse me, that's.
One at a time, please.
Yes, please, thank you. When I was here at the last meeting, I got the same man. When I was here at the last meeting, I got the same answer from that person. But on September sixth, twenty twenty-two, Deputy Mayor Ladado made a motion, seconded by Trustee Colar, and adopted to authorize the employment of part-time treasurer Leslie Pillerson at a salary of forty thousand dollars a year, effective September seventh. So September seventh, twenty twenty-two, we had a treasurer, the same person that we have now. And it just bothers me to know, yeah, a lot of things might not have been done right, a lot of things might have been screwed up, but Tom, you and Donna sat over here on the, the twenty-seventh of February, and the treasurer sat at that club there. And your responses back and forth, your questions back and forth, the treasurer said then, the reports that are due to the state will be filed on time, shortly, all right? Why didn't that person as a treasurer, that person keeps on saying that they weren't the treasurer back then, was actually the CFO of this village? Why did, why wasn't there a Paul Revere moment when they sat here at that buzzin', budget presentation? When you asked the question, why didn't that person say, we're in bad shape?
Why didn't anybody, uh, well, Joe never responded to that question in the first place.
He said, we're working on it.
No, I'm talking about the treasurer had a conversation with you.
So the treasurer, as a title, if that, is that what the board gave her, fine. However, she had no responsibility for-
And, okay, you don't know that.
Yes, I do.
Let him finish.
Because when I came in the door, the only thing that she was working on was what we have the accounting firm of DST trying to do right now, is quantify the pile of crap over there to put together the paperwork so we could get a proper order. That was her job. When I came in, that's what she was doing. And then when we realized that the one point six was written, I asked her to please stop doing that. I would like you to do the treasurer's job, which meant doing the day-to-day duties of paying bills and taking care of vouchers. And we sat down with every employee, grabbed the department heads, had a meeting to say, this is an invoice, this is a voucher, and we went through the whole process for how it needs to be submitted, because you know how it was being done previously, right? There were five days, Monday through Friday, sitting on Joan's desk. Joan, what are those invoices for? Well, you're the mayor, you take these, you go in your office and you pay the bills. Oh, really? No. That's not how it's supposed to be done. So her job at the time was nothing to do with being a treasurer. Correction, the mayor is the budget officer. He is the main guy. He's mayor, budget officer, the buck stops right here. Good, bad, or ugly.
She was, she was at that meeting, she, it was designated, it was designated that she would be working on budgets. Whatever she did, you're telling me something else, but you're the treasurer.
It seems to me that if somebody was working for the prior mayor, they should not be working on any of this right now, because they have access to the potential evidence of what happened.
Let me tell you something. The only evidence you have, Steve, is, is a pile of paper. And if it wasn't for Leslie, the doors would be closed, because no one could pick up this crap and, and make any type of semblance out of it, and still be paying bills, and an application that doesn't deserve to be in a municipality's building. You're dealing with an application for a small business and potentially a personal home application.
I just don't think it makes sense that the evidence that you're going through-
You know who's going through that? We're not, she's not touching that. That's my point.
It shouldn't be there.
The state is going through-
But it shouldn't be there, it should be in their possession.
It is in their possession.
It's in your building, it's in our building.
Well, it is, it's our paperwork.
Nobody knows what's there.
Yes, they do.
Every piece of paper is, is accounted for.
Steve, they sat here, four, four, four accountants sat at these tables and at the dais, and went through everything that they wanted and needed to see to validate the budget numbers. And, and to present what he presented on Wednesday. And that's a snapshot of the beginning.
To me, it's a bad look that anybody that was involved in, maybe you're completely innocent, I'm not saying anybody did anything wrong. It's a bad look that those boxes are here.
Listen, the mayor did, did two things, three things, four things. All he did was take the bills, pay them. Understand, there was no accounting system. Do we understand this? Do we grasp it? There was no place to put anything.
Yeah, that's a big problem.
Handwritten checks.
That's a huge problem.
I went into a drawer, I had five drawers, six drawers, seven drawers, they said this Saturday. Every one of them is eight is eight. I opened up something, I go in there, a check from 2020 written to H2M, never got it. What the hell is it doing in a file folder to have nothing to do with H2M?
That's, that's a huge problem.
That's a big problem. Forget about huge, it's a big problem. And this is what goes on, and we've been dealing with every single day. And there isn't anybody up here that hasn't gone up and beyond the duty to try to do it, and she's been working night and day.
I wouldn't want to sit, I wouldn't want to sit anywhere.
Couldn't you give us an explanation exactly what she did in the last administration, from her words, not yours, Tom?
Absolutely, Vinnie. Go, go for it.
I was not involved in the day-to-day operations. I was hired to help do what Brendan was, is doing. Starting from the nineteen, twenty-fifth year.
So you were doing the audit, correct?
I was just going through the books, trying to get them in audit-ready condition for PKF O'Connor Davies.
So, but he's doing the audit, Brendan.
He's, yeah, he's getting, no, he's not doing an audit, he's, he's prepping the books for the auditors to come in and audit. So that's what I was hired to do originally, so I was able to go-
So you didn't see anything that was going wrong?
Excuse me, can you let Leslie?
I wanna ask a question, thank you. You could ask one, that's mine, thank you. So, did you see anything that he was seeing that he's doing now?
Yes, and I told the mayor.
Okay, but you didn't say that in any meetings?
Well, why wouldn't you call Steve Newhouse if you thought there was a problem?
Guys knew that they're not gonna do it, and one at a time, okay?
No, like, I'm just saying, like-
I mentioned it to the mayor and the board, it's their fiscal duty to mention it to everybody else. I was not under the impression I had to say it to the public.
Listen, I don't come to many meetings, and I watch every video that has been posted, I've never heard that in a meeting, never.
That the books were in-
That, that we had some-
Well, he wasn't gonna admit, the mayor, previous administration wasn't gonna admit the books were unacted.
But you never mentioned it in any meeting, though.
I didn't mention it publicly, I mentioned it to the mayor and the previous board.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Denise Smith, I've been in Washingtonville for about twenty-four years.
Do we have your address too, please?
Forty-seven Woodfield.
Thank you.
Um, so I came, this is my first meeting, sad to say, but my reason for being here is that it's a little bit disconcerting that taxes across the board, twenty percent. I understand, and I know after this meeting, nothing's gonna change, it is what it is. But I did some homework, and apparently this is not a new problem for Washingtonville. Um, there is an article on the internet, uh, from Orange, um, the Controller's Office that showed there was a problem back in 2011, 2012, the same issue we're facing now. So what's to prevent this from happening in the future?
Well, for us, for the next ten years, every quarter, we need to submit financials. Okay, we need to submit financials. We need to submit capital, uh, capital, uh, project list on a quarterly basis. And we're gonna be basically audited every quarter. And we need to send reports. Uh, we're, we're just in the process of going through and audit right now.
So can I just ask you, why was there an audit conducted prior?
That's a really good question. I mean, there's, there's a couple of things that always seem to happen. Like every three years, the Controller's Office would come in and do their normal cycle routine of coming into a village, town, school system, whatever. That didn't happen. I mean, I don't know, perfect storm, call it whatever the heck it want. But the, the village board never executed their annual audits. So in not doing your annual audits, there's reports that are supposed to be sent to, they're called AUDs, there's a new name to them now. They're supposed to be sent to the, to the state on an annual basis. Your audits are supposed to be done a couple of months after the end of your fiscal year. Nothing, none of it was done. Then come 2020, the, um, New York State Bond, um, removed our bond rating. So we had no bond rating. We have no financials, so we couldn't show them if we're underwater or above water.
Okay, so, um, I just have some financial background. Um, do you have an independent auditor that audits your books yearly?
Yes.
Okay, so was that done?
No, that's what I, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay, so-
That's up to the responsibility of the village to, our year end is February twenty-eighth. So we would reach out to the auditors, they would come in, we'd set up appointments, we would give them data, but there was no data.
But who's responsible for contacting? I just wanna see where the breakdown was.
Us, us, the board.
The board, and it was Ford.
The board? Who, one person? Any one person does that call to?
Like I said, you have a treasurer, and you have the, the mayor who has also the title of budget officer.
Okay.
Okay, but at the end of the day, it's the, you know, base, if you wanna say it's the mayor, it's the mayor. But, you know, the board has to take action. We get on the phone, we would call the auditor and say, you know, we're ready for our audit.
So I can answer that question. Both Tom and I get an email from the State Controller's Office saying, because we get them now almost every once a month, you're missing your reports, you're missing your reports. So it doesn't go just to the mayor, it goes to the mayor and deputy mayor.
Okay.
So there are two people on that. Um, the other question you had mentioned, how do we stop this from happening again? This is how-
By raising taxes?
By coming to the meetings, making yourself known, making your voices heard. You start hearing stuff that isn't making sense, you need to speak out. I was exactly where you were last year at this time, although they didn't hold it till February, asking questions, saying this, your numbers aren't working, what's going on? We went through everything from having a preliminary budget online, which you are required to post before the public hearing, to walking in the night of the budget and being handed a totally different budget. And when we questioned, we were shut down. That's why I'm here today.
But it seems to not make a difference.
Yeah, so how does that, how do you-
I'm looking at it, it makes no difference. It makes no difference.
Right, how, to, to, to your point, how do you stop it if you think that it's suspicious?
First of all, like Tom mentioned earlier, we are under a microscope for the next decade, right?
But Susan Lewinsky just said last year-
We were not under a microscope.
I understand, but she's now sitting there, so what have you learned? How can we stop it? And this year, there's no chance of us stopping it, and I don't know that anybody here actually thinks we have to stop this, it's crazy.
Okay, so-
What would we do next year if we all educate ourselves?
Be involved, be involved, watch our numbers. You have the right to come in here at any time and put in a FOIL request, four bills were paid that week. That's public information where your money is going, ask.
What about internal controls, like internal management controls of sorts, like, so let's say you have-
You have to speak up, sweetie, I don't hear well.
Oh, my goodness. Internal controls. What about internal controls, like you have, I mean, you guys are, you know, you seem to be honest. You're doing what you need to do, but you're elected officials, you may be gone next year. So if, I mean, right now, you know that you're, you have our best interests at heart. But two years from now, we may have a completely different board.
Correct.
All right, so if there was a committee that was formed of residents, people who are knowledgeable in, in finance, in accounting, every year, internal management controls, this is what the budget that we're proposing, this is what we're doing. This gentleman over here seems to have a lot of experience, well, you sound like, you sound a lot more informed than I am. So if there was something like that, that would actually take the heat off of the village board and the mayor. I mean, it's like, at least it's like a, it's almost like a checking out.
He's a former trustee.
Citizens watch.
Well, there you go.
Which is why you have your audits, okay? Those audits are available for public review. When they're not done, everybody's-
And then you have another balance, another check, internal management controls of a committee that's formed residents who know what they're looking at, who can ask the right questions, who can bring it up to you.
Well, do, do, you know what, it's not a bad idea, but there is a huge difference between regular accounting, I'll call it, and municipal account. It's, it's big. And how do you get educated? We go to school. I mean, you know, we were no different than anybody sitting on the other side of the fence here. And it's, it's time, and it's education, and it's that the ability to, you, you wanna learn and be the best you can be.
I get it, and I, I have to, in defense of what happened the last few years, don't forget COVID. I just seem, I, I know it sounds like an excuse, but everything kinda just stopped with COVID, so.
Well, you know, that's, I get it, but I, I don't get, you know, to some degree, because listen, everybody went to Zoom, everybody went to Google, and you know what, life gotta, has to go on, people are still getting paid, people are still working. And you know, you, and you gotta carry on the business. It's, it's not like you just closed the books, right? I know, I mean, it's out there because that's, a lot of people say the same thing. Well, it was COVID, it was COVID.
Huge opportunity for now pieces.
Well, that's what the Controller's Office said also, and why, how did this go on for that many years and they did not step in? There were red flags all over the place. And I contacted them prior to taking office, because I knew what we were stepping into was bad. Never expected it this bad, but we wanted to get the ball rolling on it, and that's what the explanation that I got. How could this happen? And they said, part of it, not all of it, was due to COVID.
I think it's not.
Manpower.
That's an excuse, that's a ridiculous excuse.
Tom, so Paul Lang, Taffrey Lane, thank you, I didn't, excuse me, thank you for answering my email questions, uh, over the weekend.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. I was, I was scared, Wayne had walked out of the room before, but I was scared that I actually understood what Wayne was talking about.
Wow.
That's scary. This budget is due the thirty-first, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Do you wanna, do you wanna postpone it and, and look at this article that's in, I, I haven't been able to read, because it's hard to read on my thing. The headline out of this state audit is critical of Washingtonville budget process.
The audit, the document you're talking about is publicly available and-
I know it is, I know, but I'm saying, do we wanna look and see what they're saying, and maybe there's something in there that-
No, I think-
Have you seen it?
No, and I'm not sure. We got, we did receive an email from somebody, but after we called them up to ask them what it was, they said, don't, don't worry about it. So we weren't quite sure where, where we are, because no audit has been completed. Twenty twenty is still under, uh, our regular auditors, which is PKF, right? BST is still working on twenty twenty-one, so we don't have anything substantial to even, for whatever they think they would be reporting on. The Controller's Office that is in this building currently doing a risk analysis on all sorts of data, um, and they keep it pretty much under the cuff, so they don't really tell you really where they're digging and what they're looking for at the end of the day. But they're doing their thing, and now they're gonna be rolling the risk analysis study into a formal New York State audit for twenty twenty-two into twenty twenty-three. And, and knowing, obviously, because they've been in the building, that we don't have any kind of audits paperwork to give them. So they're gonna, they're gonna dive into the paper pile, just like BST and, uh, what Leslie was doing previously.
When was the last completed audit that we submitted?
Twenty nineteen.
Uh, further to your question, I actually have not the low-hat article, but the actual document from the controller here. And they really, at the end, only make two recommendations. One, that the board needs to adopt a local law to override the tax limit, which they've done. And two, that the village official should, over the course of the year, review the proposed estimates for revenues and expenditures and admit as necessary. And that's just because of the lack of data from the last three or four years with the last administration. So I think they're already doing that.
And we'll, again, going live, potentially on the fifteenth of February, on our new accounting system, then all that paper basically can go away from, from us, from that point moving forward. Everything will be on a computer, and the information will be there, and we'll post quarterly reports. When we get our budget, when our audits, we'll post those, as normally done for, uh, uh, letters of recommendation. We'll post those, and then that's up to the board to adopt whatever those controls are that they think need to be, uh, recommended. And right now, they would probably, it's gonna be a slaughter, absolute, get out of my way, bulldoze you down. It's gonna be a scathing report. But now we need to take that scathing report, but of course, again, we're gonna be on a computer system, not dealing with manual everything and not being able to find anything. So we hope that that will alleviate probably eighty percent of it, and the rest of it is internal controls that we need to do. And we're doing that right now. We have, when we got in the office, I'll be with you in a sec, Steve. I mean, we put a, a procurement policy together. And I, and like I said, we met with the department heads, we went over the vouchers, we went over the system, until we can get this system up and now start to feed all that data, everything we're doing, so we can get accurate reports. So at the end of the day, everybody can see exactly- So at the end of the day, everybody can see exactly what the heck's going on, including us.
So you said it's gonna be on a computer. Can you elaborate? Is it gonna be a cloud service that's gonna track all changes made?
It's a software application. It's called Admins, if you wanna check it out. But it's very well-known, it's very well-used. And it's, if you wanna go into it, I mean, you're using it.
Does it track all changes made by anybody that goes into it?
Yeah, there's an audit trail, and it's, you know, could do such a governmental accounting. So now all of our funds will be separate. We'll have a requisition process, purchase order process. I'm gonna be able to print like warrant reports every board meeting, so then the board can see all the bills that are being paid.
And it's just called Admins, or is it?
Admin GovTech.
Admin.
Admins Gov. Okay, thank you.
So we can tell you, you'll be maxed for the water?
No, no, let's go to Admins.
Go to Admins also?
As of May.
Okay, it's all gonna be interfaced, so it just gonna be.
It'll be one system.
Brandon, the auditor who spoke at Wednesday's meeting.
I don't see a name tag on you. And you interjected if you took that.
Sorry, I'm Chris Petlock, I'm the village attorney.
Learn an address.
Yeah. Brandon, the auditor who spoke at length on Wednesday noted publicly that it is specifically designed for municipal government accounting, unlike.
So it's not Excel installed and so.
It is not Excel, it's not QuickBooks, it is something.
That's kinda what you're doing right now, but not even.
That's what they did, but then they also had notes and stickies and things like that, so it's.
No.
So you're getting a.
It's a long-term software if you're in the circles.
Professional system.
Okay.
If it's digital, like if you wanted to put in a requisition, does it go, generate requisitions and then somebody has to approve it?
Yes, it'll be told, even like I'll get an email when the department head enters it, so then I can log in, I review it. And then the second reviewer will get an email and it's available.
So there's checks and that one.
Correct.
Mike, Gresian, 3 Long Street. Is this, the fellow, Brandon?
Brandon or Brendan?
I want to call him. We call him BK.
Okay. Did the village, are they gonna retain a CPA firm continuously on an ongoing basis?
Yes.
You have a CPA firm?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be PKF at the moment. So, because they've been part of this process.
Yeah.
We wanna end with that process.
Yeah, once that's all done.
Because they'll have the history and they know exactly what's going on.
Okay.
And we'll get, you know, and I've told all of them, including the comptroller's office, you know, I don't want this thing sugar-coated. If it's garbage, we wanna know how bad the garbage is and what are the controls that need to be fixed. And we know that already. But it's, we just want just honest audit. Because you get something, you know, you're paying for it, and sometimes though, you know, eh, it doesn't, you know, it's bad. They should've done this, but they didn't do that, so we recommend, you know, start doing that.
Will you guys provide a report like in three months to show where we're at and stuff as far as expenses versus income and stuff like that? Would you update the public every quarter or something like that?
As soon as we go live in February, so three months down, or some time in the middle, you know, summertime or whatever, we'll post it, sure.
P and L, you want to start, are you looking for my presentation maybe?
Presentation or something just to show us where we're at?
Yeah, we'll put it on our webpage too, so you guys can have access to it. Listen, again, we're not, we're, again, we're all about the transparency and we wanna be able to share, so, you know, good news, bad news. So everybody knows what's going on. We all live here and we just need to help each other out.
I have one more comment, and I know I'm probably gonna get beat up for it, but this gentleman before said, you know, maybe the board should've gone with a 0% raise or something to show good faith. Right now, personally, it's a dollar, it's a dollar more per resident or something for you guys to retain the salary that you proposed. And your salary comes out to be $19 an hour. Right now, you're making $7.21 an hour, which is crazy for anybody to be making that salary, especially in today's day and age. So, I mean, it was a nice gesture, what you did, but I don't really think it was a. If there's other ways to cut things, say, maybe that would be a good thing, but.
Mike, you know what's funny about that? We did what the residents asked us to do.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm hearing what you're saying now. I can't tell you. A lot of people came up to me after we made that decision and said they felt that was a big mistake.
It was selfless, definitely selfless.
We're never gonna please everybody.
And it's not, again, my concern isn't about this board, it's about boards in the future and how they're gonna manage the, you know, budgets. So if you're, if you're adept, not that I'm gonna get, I can tell you are, to put procedures in place where we don't end up back here with such a steep increase. Of course, it's gonna go, things are gonna go up, 3%, 4%, whatever, 5%, however.
Yep.
But 20% gives a little bit of, it's ticker shock.
Absolutely. We.
We're paying it too.
We're paying it too and you know what?
No, I.
Like I said.
But, yeah.
Back to Wednesday and back to April. We knew it was bad. But, and just again, forget about anything else that was going on, but if you just look at your increase, a zero increase, just multiply it out the amount of years. And, you know, you're darn close without any interruptions, but there were other factors that are causing this. And if we could make it 11, it would be 11, trust me.
I did the figures based on the 15% that you suggested and based on the assessment of 40,000. The difference between 15% and 21% is $127.
It's not huge.
Over a year. $10 a month. Now I know.
Well, depending on what your assessment.
Well, the board was 40,000. I did that so that you could see above or below that.
Michelle?
Yeah, I just, I came in late, I don't know if this was addressed, but we had mentioned it Wednesday or Saturday, I don't remember anymore, about the general fund owes the water and sewer fund money.
Right.
Now, I know there's a timeframe of like a year that it has to be.
Paid back.
Paid back. When is that? And now that we have this loan, can we pay back the water and sewer and reduce our facility charges?
Okay, so two different things. The facility charge is strictly for the sewer plant bond, okay? It needs to bring in $110,000 minimum per quarter. So that has nothing to do with the money that was borrowed.
Yeah, but we're going up from 37 to 50.
Correct, because it needs to bring in $110,000 per quarter. The first quarter we were here, it brought in 73,000. The next quarter, it brought in 78,000. Last quarter, it finally brought in, I believe, like 115,000, 118,000. And that's because I'm still straightening out the sewer rents. If I get them ever straightened down correctly and get people built correctly.
And we can make adjustments on that.
We will make adjustments.
Any other questions?
So, the 70,000 was total?
That was just in the facilities charge.
That was at 37, 57.
That was with a rollover money?
Everything.
Everything.
Yes.
That's a fixed amount. We know how many residents there are, right? How many meters are out there? That's a fixed amount, we should know how much we get a year, right?
They should've. You're absolutely right, they should've known. And I think.
Do we know that?
Do we know what? If they didn't, then how did they raise the rates from 15 to 37, 57?
So, but we know, the facility charge where it is now, we know what that revenue is, correct?
So, first of all, I am still discovering errors in the facility use charges. I gave an example, there was a building, your father gave me the number, it should've been 17. That building had been reduced to seven units. So 10 units every month, they were not paying their fair share. Another building, a commercial building with multiple tenants in it, was only paying two facility use charges.
Can we backdate that to?
Not really.
It has those meters, right?
It has, the facility use charge has nothing to do with meters. It has to do with number of units.
So there's typically one meter in a residence, so each unit gets their own facility charge?
Correct, and in the commercial is where it gets screwy. So if you have an office building that has 20 businesses in there, it should have 20 facility use charges. I'm in the middle of trying to review to make sure everybody's paying their fair share on the facility use charge. And we run into a couple quarters and we're bringing in more money than we need, we will readjust the numbers down. I would love to do that.
That we're issuing to schools as well, right?
Everywhere.
Everywhere. Okay. Any? Okay?
Patrice Gassner, 7 Hurson Lane, Washingtonville. I've been a resident here for about, only about five and a half years, not the 24 years, 30 years that most of these people are. And I'm going to say, you know, with the Bucko administration that was here, I didn't like what was going on. I saw on Facebook pluses and minuses. You can't believe what you see on Facebook. You've gotta come to these meetings and get more involved, because that's what I did. I'm on the comprehensive plan committee, I'm on the zoning board of appeals. And the only way that you're gonna get your information is by sitting here when they have their regular meetings. And not come here after the shit hits the fan and then complain about it. I have 100% faith in everyone that's sitting up there. And if they have to raise our taxes 21%, can you just imagine if we didn't get out there and hit every household to get them into office? And we'd have another two years of Bucko, you'd have another two years of your head sitting in Salem, and we'd be in deeper crap than we are right now. So I can't encourage you more to get involved, including the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could add, I know Steve's here. Steve, why don't you do your plug for the comprehensive?
Yeah, I was just gonna do that.
You want a microphone?
Just looking to see if I got a bullseye in my bag. But, yeah, I'm also with, I'm on the ARB board, the architectural review, that's for signage. And I'm also on the comprehensive, which is, is an enormous amount of work. We've been doing it seven, six months or seven months now?
Since June was the first meeting, we just finished our seventh.
Yeah, we've been at it for, you know, seven months now. And it's a compilation of, we're looking at everything, zoning, where we can build, where you can't build, where we're gonna rezone, where we can do this. I mean, you know, the pamphlet we have, so far, we've got about that much paperwork. But next upcoming month, we're having, we're trying to invite and get as many participants in the village as we can, because we're gonna break it up into, say, modules, and the representatives from the board will be here to answer any kind of questions. What we're looking for is what the people in the village would like to see. What would you like done? You know, just randomly, anything you can, anything you can think of. Would you want a stop sign somewhere? Would you want this done? Would you want that done? Would you want, you know, lighting?
Lighting in high growth.
You know? Yeah, I mean, we're looking for information because we can, anybody can only work with the data you have. And as far as this board, they're working with the data that they have, which is really, you know, you talk about a lot of legal stuff. I'm a certified federal arbitrator. I work partially for the United States government. I prosecute fraud, okay? Willful intent to defraud. What you're talking about can't be done, and I'll tell you one.
Which one?
Anything you name, because you keep naming to hit these guys and put Bucko every single day in jail or whatever.
Somebody stole.
I can appreciate what you're saying, but when you go to court and you face a judge, you have to prove damage, okay? What that board has done.
That's a very interesting statement. You have to prove damage, okay?
Yeah, that's not interesting.
So we're all damaged, like we are.
No, we're not damaged. We're not damaged.
We have to raise the taxes to cover the bills.
That's not damage. That's not damage.
I can have to go home and do some homework.
You can do whatever homework you want.
That's fine.
I'll tell you, you're talking to an arbitrator, he's in terms.
I'm shaking my head yes to what he said.
Okay.
Okay, you have to prove.
You have to prove damage, somebody has to have been damaged.
What they did, if anything, first off, what the previous boards did, in a sense, is that they did not perform the duties with due diligence with which they were elected to do. Now, everybody, you know, is going, you know, they're saying what happened, what happened, but nobody fact-checked that. All the records that you're talking about, everything they do is an open book. By law, you're entitled to see anything and everything that they do.
I learned that. Freedom of information, yeah?
And all you have to do is ask.
Okay.
And that's by law, they can't hide anything from you. They're not allowed to legally by law. They cannot, am I correct? They cannot do that.
With some exceptions that don't apply here, that's absolutely right.
Yeah, we are certain, certain things.
So in your state, you have to prove there was a victim for there to be a crime?
So a judge will say, well, how did they damage you? Well, they didn't raise our taxes in proportion. Yeah, but you gotta trust somebody.
But I'm here trying to learn.
Okay, trust yourself or look at the law, true law, on the inside, if you're gonna look at it, not Facebook. You know, I'm not on Facebook because I'm not allowed.
Your girlfriend's gonna look at that?
No, the work, no, the work I do is confidential.
Okay, no, I think it's, I think it's.
Because I can't make a statement on Facebook and it can't come back to me in court.
Where would I go to learn how villages like this smoke the air?
Just to get back to the other thing, what they did do, one thing that they did do that could be a legal issue, and that is going to be addressed after all this work is done, after all those controls, all those audits are done. That's gonna be supplied to the state. They will, the state is the one that'll make the decision. The only thing that I see here that they did illegally was they, these guys simply took, I think, they took from Peter and paid Paul.
Yeah.
They just gotta check in and say, well, which one should be, you know, paid? And they just paid, there was no real, you know, there was no sheriff in town looking over them.
I'm gonna bring us back to the budget, because that's what's on it. I will note, however, that if there's criminal charges, it'll likely be backed by David Hoofler and not the state, because generally the EG does not bring criminal charges. It's the county district attorney. But let's get back to the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, are you done? Is there anything else regarding? Are you done?
Yeah, I just, I don't know, we're trying to get it out for that meeting. I guess it's gonna, I don't know, by phone or by flyers.
We want to see why, it's February 15th. This is the flyer.
Why don't you go make some copy right now? I can make copies.
Copy's out there. On the way in, there's copies.
Oh, there's copies out there.
There would be a file on the way in.
All right. All right, so if there are any other further questions at the moment, then we will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Close.
Have a second. Questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. Next would be the resolution for the adoption. So a meeting of the village for Village of Washingtonville, New York, was gonna be on January 29th, 27th, or at 7:00. Resolution was duly authorized and seconded. Resolution adopting budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Whereas tentative budget for the Village of Washingtonville was prepared and introduced for a fiscal beginning March 1st, 2024 and ending February 28th, 2025. And whereas a public hearing was held on January 24th, 27th, and 29th. And all interested parties were afforded the opportunity to refer to the respective tentative budget, after which public hearing was closed. Now therefore be resolved. Section 1, the above there, whereas clause are incorporated herein, is set forth in full. Section 2, the mayor and the board of trustees of the Village of Washingtonville hereby adopt the proposed village budget for the fiscal year beginning March 1st, 2024 to February 28th, 2025, including any amendments to such budgets as approved by the board of trustees, which shall upon adoption become final village budget. Section 3, the village clerk and other village officer, employees, or consultants, as directed by the mayor, shall take any and all actions necessary to carry out the provisions of this resolution. Section 4, this resolution shall be effective immediately. Questions of adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote on a roll call which resulted as follows. Do I have a motion to accept?
I make that motion to accept the vote.
Do we have a second? Second, any questions, comments from the board? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye. You have to do my roll call, so.
Yes, all right. So Susan Walensky?
Yes.
Donna Jackaruso?
Aye.
Stephen Presser is absent. And Merwin Coleman? Motion, and myself, yes. Motion passes 4-0 with one absent. So that concludes the resolution. And again, I can't really thank you all enough over a couple of weeks, days, nights, and so forth for taking the time to be here and get involved and be part of this process that obviously is very important to all of us. And moving forward, we will continue to do our fiduciary responsibility and our duties as mayors and trustees to work for you on a daily basis and work our tails off to make sure that we're giving you all the information necessary and be as very, very watchful eye over the budget and our spending. So, thank you. And again, if you guys need any questions after this, and really, at any point in time, I urge you just to pick up the phone. Number's out there. Got a card by the big window if you want to grab a card. But we really do appreciate everybody's attendance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you make a motion?
Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah.
Thanks, John.
Tom, can you, we need a adjournment meeting.
Oh, yeah, we can. Let's have a motion to adjourn. Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Okay.